Order here and let's say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum tonight. So. All right. Any other additions on the agenda, Brian, or anybody else for that matter, I guess?
Uh, the only change is for Agenda thirteen C and D, which would be talking about Maple Lakes Estates, removing the Resolution Improvement Plan specs, and then authorizing our auditor advertiser bids. Uh, Tyler, the engineer, sounds like he will have a little bit more time to think through, how they want to have that development bid out.
So just removing C and D?
Yeah, C and D under Agenda thirteen.
Any other changes, or am I going to look for a motion to accept the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Chelsea did a motion, Brian did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda.
I just put the vendor invoice or something.
Oh.
Consent agenda.
Uh, take a moment to look at the vendor invoices.
Yes, just updated there.
A few seconds ago. Claim approval list?
Hot off the press.
Little.
Yep. Got it up there.
Anything on here, Brent, that we needed to be aware of or?
Um, the only thing, and I honestly don't know if it's included on here, I believe it would be, or will be soon at the next one, is for blackmailing, blackmailing the accounting software. We already have some costs tied to getting the accounts receivable module on the accounting software.
So this one is not currently out there?
So there's some costs for that, that's our, yeah, accounts receivable. And then, uh, also the credit card manager component of that, which should help with streamlining any expenses. But maybe not most. And it, the accounts receivable allows us to be able to create invoices beyond, uh, just utility billing. That's the only, only one outside of the norm. All right.
Okay, unless you guys see something.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Brian?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. About the minutes from last meeting. Everybody see anything in there? Okay, you got anything or?
There was just, yeah, so there was just no commentary around the discussion points where there was no action taken.
Yeah.
So like, I was thinking about state aid distribution, there was fair amount of discussion around that.
Yeah, there, there was no.
We, we, we didn't take any action to say that we're going to be allocating any of those funds to Parkwood.
What, what I would suggest, looking at that, that isn't the same version I had on there. So I would suggest table this and have it at the next meeting.
The meeting minutes?
Yes, because this isn't the same version I had.
This isn't?
No, this isn't the one, so I'd say table this and we'll just take action the next meeting.
The new one?
Yeah, we'll just.
Okay. Okay, then we'll table the approval.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table that until next meeting. Okay. All right, uh, public comment, anybody got anything they want to say? Going once, going twice? All right, move along then. Matt, you got Future Land Use Map?
All right, so the Future Land Use Map is ready for, uh, this should be the first reading, correct? Because we're going to adapt this by ordinance. And so this is the first deliverable of the Horace 2045 project. I'll have my notes here. Uh, this is an important tool, I talk a lot about, you know, the planning department needs a, a set of tools in order to make more citizen informed decisions, and this is a very important one. Uh, this, this map serves as a foundation for both evaluating development proposals and, and compatible uses, as well as underwriting zoning changes. Um, it's really a, a, you know, powerful and broad tool. So I'll answer any questions you have on that, and, um, answer any additional questions as, as arise.
Okay, Matt, so one of the, I was just going to ask on this one, the, um, this was the consultants, just kind of talking as I'm looking here, but I mean, the consultants, this is part of one of the things they came up with in coordination with the city, right?
Correct, yeah, and with the, I think it's important to note that this is a result of a public process too. I mean, there were three meetings about this, we had a very successful, uh, internet survey that was statistically significant.
I mean, yeah, there's been a process involved here, this just didn't start.
I didn't just draw this over, yeah, this is a.
You didn't grab a couple of crayons and start the process, right? This was something that we've been working on for a while, so.
Planning commissioner's reviewed it, planning commissioner approved sending it forward. And, uh, originally there were some changes that they requested that we made.
And community focus, remind me again, the community focus areas?
Those will be areas that we will zone and program less so based on the use there, and more based on mixed use. People focused, human scale.
Either, either commercial, commercial or mixed, commercial, residential, higher density.
Right, yeah. One of the, in my opinion, the best practice to deliver the wording that we hear a lot in the comp plan process, which is going to keep Horace a small town, a small town feel, it's to treat commercial centers a little bit differently than typically treated in suburbs. Uh, and that's to, to move, understand commercial centers more as neighborhood centers than pure shopping centers. And so having a, a community focused designation allows us to make the next steps towards ensuring that commercial centers are zoned to be more neighborhood centers.
Right, because that's based upon, I mean, we've heard those comments when we first started on the council, and again, I think that perpetuated forward in those public meetings. Yeah, I kind of, I like the way this is laid out, this is kind of, this, this reflects what we've been discussing. Russ, you got any comments on this, I know you guys probably have discussed this as well, but.
I was going to say, uh. We, uh, we had, we had some changes that we requested, and, uh, they did them in, uh.
Yeah.
And I think this is probably, uh, a good place for us to start as any place.
Agreed. Yeah.
So this, um, urban, again, what, how do you classify urban? Because that's butting up right against the lead industrial, right?
That's, urban would be a density, I believe we have it quoted as ten units an acre, ten to thirty-three. So just higher density.
It's a density.
It's just a density.
Density is the designation. Okay, but it isn't necessarily commercial or industrial?
No, 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 urban on this map designates high density housing.
Okay, okay. And now I was surprised that we didn't list the lagoons on here as being public or anything. Is that, would that be future use?
This is all future use, this is, this is not, I mean, there's even some neighborhoods on here that are, come, have a different use on them, but this is not, doesn't dictate what happens now, or even what, this dictates what might happen in twenty years.
Well, one example for you is, uh, you know where I live? And that's not designated as residential. And it shouldn't be, because in some future iteration, uh, the residential up there will probably be bought out. And that's, so that's what we're looking at, we're looking at the future up there.
Right, so the buyer of that property would then in turn come and make a proposal when they're ready to develop, and this is the first thing that we weigh the proposal against.
I think that's the thing too, we need to get across with this, this isn't the one year map, this is the twenty to forty.
Yeah, this isn't the original.
Yeah.
All, all existing zoning still stays. Uh, somebody who's, like, meet my house first down, I rebuild it. Because I'm zoning residential, I can do that.
Right, like I said, this is the future, this is looking at the future, where we want to go with things, so.
What about the little strip of industrial on the south side of downtown?
The strip of industrial?
Yeah, there's a little purple strip on the.
Yeah, that's there because there is, the, the existing industrial use might be hard to retrofit. There's like underground tanks and things like that. And, uh, it's generally healthy to have some light industrial mixed in with downtown. There's all, you know, there's a, like, uh, re, recast city, there's a big movement about that and things like that. It just kind of fits there, and the public wanted it to fit also, if you look at the.
So there's no concern with that getting kind of messy, right?
No, because as, as this map becomes implemented, we'll have, the, as a map is implemented, it will allow us to modernize the zoning code, and through that, we can have more control over the type of industrial that goes there.
I don't know what the urban is, so there's compact development, and then there's urban. What would exactly?
Compact is our R six, urban is primarily multifamily. That's how I would view it, in simplest terms.
It's kind of random, there's only just one little urban spot.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a huge desire from the public to permit large apartment complexes. There's certainly a market need for it in some places, and certainly we can deliver multifamily in the R six concept in ways that I think fit the public vision better than a large, you know, three story apartment building. But with the amount of industrial that's in town, and the amount of space left in the inventory to have, to, that allows for commercial use, there needs to be some type of multifamily. And, uh, from the public ma- map making process and our review, those are the most logical spots for it to go, so.
So surprised, for example, with even along seventy-six here, that more out this direction or this direction, more fly this commercial, or I guess it's.
Well, that, uh, community focus.
Slash community focus.
Yeah.
You know, because there's just one little tidbit right here, right, but then it's right next to this suburban, which that could be just about anything.
Yeah, we also take into account existing, uh, existing development proposals, and that's, that's Cup Creek there. And so we looked at the existing map, and we also looked at what the public indicated they desired to see there. There, this is not, I mean, certainly, to some degree, this is an exercise, and to some degree, this is speculating, but it's also grounded in reality and what's happening too, so.
That little brown section on, or that little section up there is a small substation.
Oh, that right there.
That's a small substation.
Okay. So in essence, the, the, the substation here, where is that getting moved to? Do we know?
It probably.
It's on such valuable land.
I know.
Yeah, that at some point, it would, you know, this is anticipating, it just makes sense a little bit.
Okay, it's interesting that we fly this, being a substation right here.
I'm, I'm sorry, you guys, you guys haven't seen what's been going on. They've been building the big substation down there. They hauled in a lot of fill to build it up more. I don't know what their plans are, but they're building up the big substation, and they built up a little substation just east of my place too, somewhat this year. My guess is they're not going to need that little one they've got on the corner.
But they're beefing up that bigger one a little further east there, yeah?
Yeah. Which makes sense.
So Matt, what'd you, what would you like us to do with this this evening?
This is the first reading to.
I think it's just a resolution.
Just a resolution? Let's get it done tonight if we can, if you guys agree. And certainly, I guess it should also be noted one last thing, is that Future Land Use Maps can be amended, much like a comp plan or much like a zoning map. Typically, they're only amended once a year, in my experience. There's like a timeframe in which you want to make a large policy, and then the public can propose it, and typically it's handled on a yearly basis. So this is also not set in, I mean, this is amendable and changeable and dynamic as anything else we do. So this doesn't lock the city into these potential uses for the next twenty years.
But it's our initial roadmap that we need after, after some exhaustive study here. This is kind of what we've come up with over the time here, so. Yeah, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt, not adapt, to adopt the, uh, Future Land Use Map, for the city of Horace, as proposed by the planning, zoning board, right?
Nailed it.
Did I?
Yeah, Brian.
Get it right once a year.
Attaboy.
Yeah, I guess my only thought is just that urban apart, like, the apartments are right on the highway, I don't know.
Which ones?
The urban, the brown urban section.
Up on the north side there? The developer who owns that land has indicated that's what the desire is. And, uh, I think it makes sense to have some type of higher density residential along the highway, but you have to be cognizant about where it goes, because there's a lot of single family on that highway also. And, um, you, the, by, by no means does that mean that we, the developer must do that there, you know? But it allows me to have a tool when the proposal comes in to say, well, can we move this part of the project here? And then, you know, it's a, it, 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 oh, it streamlines the process, it makes it more consistent for the public.
Right.
Yeah, just, you know, considering how much commercial space we want, you know, do we really have, is this enough?
Well, I think we, there's a difference between how much commercial space we want and, and our capacity for it. I think those are, those are two different things. And this map, the densities in this map project a future population of Horace of about fourteen thousand people, and there's only so much commercial that can support, given that we anticipate Fargo growing to the south, and we anticipate West Fargo continue to become more dense. And so all of those were taken into account. And then it allows for, since there's not really a true commercial designation, as much as there is a, a neighborhood center designation, it allows for some flexibility in that as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, I got a motion for the resolution from Brian, Chelsea?
Yeah, I'll do a second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your honor, roll call it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Chelsea? I got a roll call, Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Resolution.
All right.
Sorry.
No problem, we're good.
I got it right, but hey, you know what?
Yeah, yeah.
We got a fifty-fifty chance of getting it right.
Yeah, we got. All right.
So let me add one thing now, the next step with the Horace 2045 project, now that this is approved, is the two, if you look on the map, those two pink areas that are designated as neighborhood focus, they'll get, uh, a, uh.
This, this area?
Yep, and the one south, so the intersection of seventy-six and seventeen, and kind of the old part of town. We call it Old Town, yeah, nope, further down, the magenta color, right this. Yeah, nope.
The fuchsia.
Eighty-eighth, eighty-eighth, seventeen.
Seventeen and wall.
Seventeen and wall.
Oh, okay, all right, right here.
So those two areas are getting a concept plans that will help, uh, help us have even more of a baseline to make zoning changes. And then the third step is, the, the third deliverable would be the comp plan itself. So that's where we are in that process.
Okay, great.
All right. We got that one covered. All right, number eight, Matt, you got that one? Becker, first edition rezone?
Hold up, Mr. Becker is subdividing, where's the staff report? It's approximately four acres, right? Um, he's approx- subdividing four acres into three separate parcels. Um, he lives across the street from a Horace Luthman church. The intent is, uh, the parcel, if you scroll down a little bit, so you can see it. So the bottom parcel that doesn't have access to the road would be donated to the church, as part of a cemetery expansion. And then the north two parcels would become residential. This will require two public hearings, a rezone and, public hearing for the rezone.
This is the access road right here?
No. No, there is no access to lot three.
Well, this is county seventeen here.
Yep, lot three has to join one there in order to have access.
It would allow the cemetery to be.
Cemetery.
Deeper.
Right here.
Correct.
Okay.
It would allow it to expand to the west.
Okay, so essentially this whole chunk.
What is that easement or next to the cemetery?
The, which, which easement to the?
Oh, this little gap here.
This right here?
No, well, that's the cemetery, that one, right?
What is that gap right there?
It's unplatted something, is, it would be designated easement.
One, there's actually two cemeteries there, I was looking at, one is the.
Oh, the.
Where it says one, that's a private cemetery, and then the other one was actually dedicated.
So in the future use, this whole area would be cemetery space?
Yep.
Once it's, once this is done, we're going to request that, you know, once it gets dedicated, that they just do a lot combo, and then just combine all that.
Yeah, and then combine this chunk as well, or is that already in there?
Uh, I'm not sure of the ownership of the two lots, or how that works. Because it's big.
I think it's all owned by the cemetery board.
Okay, so the cemetery board is the owner of those two chunks right there?
I believe so.
This one just says private.
Yeah, one says private, the other says the church, I think.
I don't remember that, I just know.
But it's unplatted.
Yeah, it was a brick cemetery at one point, and then the church took over the whole thing, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't show up there because it is an unplatted piece of land.
Okay.
Uh, so there's two public hearings involved in this, the first one is the rezone. The planning commission had recommended to, that, uh, the final plat have two additional things on it that it doesn't have, and this is implications in the rezone. Uh, one of them is the drainage contours. The second one is to show setbacks in the plat, because, uh, staff is recommending rezoning the top two, the north two parcels to RE from SR. Uh, that certainly makes for a pretty skinny house on the first parcel. Uh, however, that is the, those, that zoning designation best fits the surrounding use, which is why we recommend it there. Um, the parcel to the south, that would merge with the cemetery, uh, the proposal is to rezonate to RE. By showing the setbacks on the plat, it may, no, not RE, sorry, R one, R one.
So that, that's this.
That's that one, correct. By showing the setbacks on the plat, uh, it may, uh, suggest to the applicant that, uh, he may want to rezonate to R one if he thinks the house would be too small on the plat, and that is certainly something that we would accept that application for, but, um, either way, it doesn't slow him down in the process.
Okay, and R one is doable on that?
Correct, yeah, just we, I advised him to rezonate to RE because of the surrounding uses in the neighborhood.
Right.
We want to promote compatibility where we can. I would rather see this rezoned to RE and then him apply for variance to make some smaller changes, smaller setback changes, then apply, you know, then have R one, and then sell it to someone who builds something incompatible to the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just curious what the, what, how much land is going to be left after the setbacks?
It's a small house, it's like thirty feet.
Thirty feet wide.
Depending on how you interpret where the front of the house is, it could be, thirty-one feet would be the biggest width of a house you could build. But if you interpret the front of the house as being from the, as, as facing, um, pretty driver eighty-first there, it's a smaller house, it's closer, I think it's nineteen feet if my math is right.
It won't be access to seventeen, correct?
Correct, no access to seventeen.
Yeah, so essentially you'd be probably, um, at least twenty-five foot garage, and then you'd just have your door probably just.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 a house could be built there in RE. And then a house that fits the neighborhood could be built there in RE. But showing the setbacks may say, oh, I want to do something that gives me some more flexibility, and he can move forward with applying for more flexibility without actually delaying the rest of this process.
Actually, I think because the side yards setbacks, uh, are going to be twenty-five and thirty-five feet.
Side yards?
Because of the RE designation?
Yeah, the reason, for, reason for the thirty-five is, is he's a.
You gotta add ten feet to it.
He's a corner lot.
Mm-hmm.
What's the setbacks for the highway?
Seventy-five, that thirty-one is, is.
Okay, you're, you better read the, read it a little deeper, I don't think he's going to have seventy-five on the side.
No, art, all side yards, all arterial setbacks are seventy-five. That, that thirty-one foot figure is taking that into account.
Okay.
Hold on, that's not going to work. Seven hundred and fifty-five foot wide lot, how many thirty-one feet do they have?
Yes, that's what the, correct. The house footprint is thirty-one feet, you can certainly be.
Can you hold on a second?
Yeah.
Uh, don't, don't get excited yet. Okay, the requirement, the minimum front yard measured from the front lot line shall not be less than fifty feet from local streets and seventy-five feet from arterial, that's the front, that's a local street. The minimum rear yard measured from the rear lot line shall not be less than fifty feet. The minimum side yard measured from the side lot line shall not be less than twenty-five feet on each side of the lot. There is actually no.
Doesn't implicate a arterial?
There's no seventy-five foot here on the side.
On the side, you'd be fine.
So that's why I'm saying he's got twenty-five and thirty-five foot. The reason he has the thirty-five foot is because of another section where we designated an extra ten feet setback for corner lots, and it has everything to do with sight lines or, uh.
Utilities.
No, sight lines on driving, so you're not, so your sight line isn't blocked.
So that's ten, ten feet in addition to the utility?
No.
No, the utility typically goes in that ten feet.
Yeah, no, so he's, so he's got twenty-five feet on the west, thirty-five feet on the, on the right, so he's got sixty feet, and he's got, he still has about ninety feet of ninety-five feet buildable. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the house is sixty-six feet wide.
Because it just depends on the orientation of the house, whether it faces the road or.
Right.
It's going to face north, well, I don't care where it faces it, but.
That the, the front can be ninety.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this was approved by funding law?
Correct, with those two conditions.
Right. Okay. So long discussion, no change.
I'll make a motion.
Well.
Wait, we got to do public hearings.
Okay, so we're, all right, so open up, public hearing.
Yeah, that's in the, wait, hold on. Yeah, that's what I was interpreting. That's where I got that number from.
Interesting.
Yeah.
The highway setback to all arterial collector streets will be seventy-five feet. I stand corrected.
You might want to go R one.
Do you want me to bring it down to R one? It doesn't change.
Go to R one.
R one.
Ten feet.
It's a, it's an urban, it's, it's urban, it's like ten feet side yards, so it'd still be, you want, the side yard that doesn't face Cass County seventeen instead of fifty feet is ten. You could go up to ten from it.
Okay.
What county should be, it's still S B seventy-five?
Still S B seventy-five.
You might want to relook at how you're splitting this lot up. You might want to hold off and relook at splitting the lot, so you move that, that middle lot line more to the west.
Well, it just seems odd to me that you can build a seventy-five, you can have a seventy-five foot lot in town, and I have a hundred and fifty-five foot lot, we're talking about, I only have thirty feet to build, that just seems odd to me.
It's, well, it's the highway.
That's the linear factor.
Yeah, but if you did an R one, you'd have seventy-one feet, you would just have a ten foot. Yeah, but if you did an R one, you'd have seventy-one feet. You would just have a ten foot.
Right.
Setback on one side. If that's, works for you, then you still have, you said it was sixty-six or something.
Sixty-six?
So you'd be fine then.
Yeah, so what we could do is, is, I, maybe Lucas could correctly, if I'm wrong, we could do the public hearing to get lot three rezoned. And we could approve the preliminary plat on the condition that, you can always come back and adjust it, so we can finish this part of the process and you can direct staff to continue to, you know, to fix a specific problem if you see one. If that makes sense to you.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing for the rezone? That's it, sure.
For the whole, for what? For the whole thing or?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm wondering. Do you want it for the whole thing or do you guys wanna have it pieced?
I don't think it makes sense just to do one of the lots, does it?
Well, if, if there's options, if R one is gonna solve the problem.
R one would solve the, what, the size of the house that he's planning on building, yeah, R one would allow it to be built there.
This, instead of suburban residential, it would be R one?
The, no, go down to enabling zoning.
This one?
Nope, that one, yep. The enabling zoning for the lot next to the.
Okay, so that's why this is confusing because the abutting wasn't clear which.
The abutting zoning is what's next to the existing plat.
Right.
Yep.
Which is where your house is, so if you're fine with it, I mean, it's his house. And there's storage units across the street, so I mean, I think it's fit.
Yeah, I was, my, my, when I, when I look at the proposals, I look at it on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. Cause it's the strong cities or cities of neighborhoods, right? And making sure that what we allow for still fits the use of the neighborhood. That's why we proposed RE. If he's got an exist, he's got a house plan ready to go and, and it fits R one and we can continue to show the public, yes, this fits the compat, this compatible with the existing neighborhood. I don't have an issue with it.
Do you have any concerns with that center line moving it over the lot line or?
It's just the existing house is kinda close to that center line already. So I didn't wanna be right on top of, you know, their house, we sell it. The, the houses in the neighborhood straight to the south of us are much further closer to the road than this house is gonna be. I don't get it. This house is not gonna be even as close to county seventeen as the ones in the building.
In Chestnut, the ones on the highway, yeah.
That's why I don't.
Yeah.
Understand.
I think it's just the fact that those were done a while ago. And if we let you go closer, then we have to let the next person over it. I mean.
Right, but I'm not gonna be supposed to say that.
Oh, the zoning, the zoning regulation changed in two thousand seven.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
Revised, it says it's two thousand and three.
Okay.
Again, that development was done in two thousand, so they were with the older.
Well, and a good example is what was built on the old church property. It looks a little funny. I think it's, it's set back very far, but it's to follow.
That's because it had, it had to lead to the zoning.
Yep.
Right.
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight's an arterial road.
Yes.
You know, it's part of it.
And that, that's not even close to being, you know, as big of a road as.
So there are non-conforming uses to this in town. The reason why this is proposed the way it is is because we want to limit non-conforming uses in the future. But if, if bringing the whole thing down to R one is, is, it's a council decision, I mean, if, if council brings it to R one instead of RE, we can continue with or either way, so.
Yeah, we're in front of that.
I'll give it back.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing and do an R one then? Is that what we're gonna talk about, Lucas?
Well, the issue is we didn't publish notice.
Okay, so then what, we need to?
For an R one designation and is the applicant comfortable with taking it down to R one? Or we're just gonna do that?
Well, that's why I'm wondering, does this have to go back to planning zoning for a rule?
Yeah, but it doesn't delay, doesn't create an undue delay.
If we approve the preliminary plat, it can still go back.
Yeah, since its preliminary has to go through.
Anyway, so it doesn't, there's no undue delay.
It doesn't change anything.
You have two sets of issues. You have the plat and you have the rezone. You're just talking rezone right now.
Right.
How big is that lot?
The.
It's up to you, I mean.
A hundred and fifty-five feet wide.
And how big, acres, feet, square feet?
Uh, one point two five acres.
So.
That's why it's just not set up, tell them to be told they can't build the house.
Well, that's our question. Are you comfortable with it being an R one? Cause then it'll.
It doesn't wanna change anything for me, does it?
It just gets the, the, the setback is ten feet, so it'll be ten feet from this property line. So if you're good with that, we're all good with that.
It'll still be seventy-five feet regardless of the zone.
Ta, when, when she says ten feet, she means ten feet from the western border of the property that sits on Cass County seventeen. So no matter, you could rezone it to build a skyscraper, still has to be seventy-five feet from Cass County seventeen.
But you're saying it's ten feet from the center property?
The center property, correct.
Yeah, so that's where it gives you the distance to build your sixteen, six wide.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, this, this allows him to.
Yeah.
Do what he has planned to do.
Yep, so.
To give you an example, I have a, I have a three and a half acre lot myself that's owned R one purely for the setbacks.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything for me, other than I just want it to be where it's fit for the city, good for me, you know? So I don't want to give surprises at the end.
Yeah, and you have the plan for this property. It's not like rezoning R one and then you're losing control over what goes there.
Right.
Okay, so reiterate to me what we need to do here then, so we can move on.
Well, you know, we could, you know, no one came to speak on this. You can do your first reading now and we can just amend the second reading um, of the rezone, publish it with the corrected, uh, rezone, to change it to the, for SR to R one.
So.
Before you do your second reading.
We make a motion to approve the preliminary plat with set changes to bring the.
Well, I would focus.
First, we gotta do the rezone, right?
You're on rezone.
Approve the rezone.
We're not on plat.
Oh, we're, oh, okay, we're just doing the rezone.
Just talking.
So if the applicant is comfortable with changing the zoning designation, which sounds like you don't care as long as you can build your house, which makes sense. I recommend that you do your first reading tonight from, so lots, uh, one and two from SR to R one. And then lot three from SR to, I guess they're all gonna be R one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be R one then.
Lots, uh, one through three from those designations to R one.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone of all three lots to RE to R one.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. We get a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Oh, maybe the lot has to be, so you have setback systems on.
The, the way that I understand, it's changed since the, like, last year. Typically, it used to be one acre. Now they'll permit setback systems under one acre so long as you can pass a percolation test. And this is from the, this is the health district's rules.
And it's gonna change now because there's a sewer line. No, sewer line isn't in the ditch there.
No.
No, I mean, so the way that the ordinance reads is the city will require new development to be on sewer, uh, unless it's an undue financial hardship to bring the sewer out there. So, for example, we're not immediately requiring sewer, we're not immediately requiring sewer once we see the results of a study on the Hess subdivision. Cause Hess subdivision is very far from any, any existing utility.
Well, the brick subdivision, what do you think about that and the sewer system down there?
I'll bet, that, that.
Off topic, okay, so.
That's gotta make petitions, so.
All right, so on to the next thing here. Um, we're done with eight, or do we need to do more?
I, yes, we're done with eight. I will revise publication, get it in paper for your next.
All right, let's move on to number nine then. Anything else we need to discuss on that?
No, if, if the council is comfortable with how the rezone is going to move forward, I'm comfortable with what the final, with the preliminary plat here looks like. Um, I would still ask that, uh, council entertain the two conditions planning commission put on that, which is have the preliminary plat show, um, contours and show setbacks. Now, it would just show the R one setbacks. And that should give some more clarity to the applicant too and.
We can hold a public hearing tonight then on the trial, because it's published, so let's start with that, then we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments around this that they'd like to talk about? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. If not, there's any more discussion on this?
So another item that the planning commission discussed is the, uh, land dedication. Uh, because the applicant is dedicating, um, the lot to the cemetery, to the church, dedicating it for public use, which you revised your ordinances to allow, um, dedication for public use. The only thing is, um, we still need a letter from park districts acknowledging that they, they're aware that, um, that land is being dedicated to the church. For use as a cemetery.
Who needs to, who's gonna let the park board know that?
What's that?
Who's gonna let the park board know that?
I will, at the next meeting, yeah.
And then, uh, the planning commission was, um, depending on the park board's recommendation, their recommendation to get that is acceptable for the land dedication.
Okay. All right, so, you guys have any other questions on that or? Probably get a motion then to accept with the preliminary plat with the two conditions.
Yep, so.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. There goes Steve. All right, on to the next.
Good.
Jim, you're up.
Do your answer, Mayor. Council, uh, first I know of the demo, the seventeen shared use path. Uh, bids were opened on Monday, uh, Wednesday, July tenth, bids were opened for a shared use path. This has been, is bid through North Florida Park and Rec. City has a recreational trails program grant and they own a hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars. My memo shows two hundred thousand, but I looked it up at the end of the day. We asked for two hundred dollars, we got one eighty-six, two one six. So, uh, the way the project was bid was, uh, alternative A, which was an asphalt shared use path, alternative B, which was a concrete shared use path. As you can see, we received three bids. One bidder chose to not submit a bid on the asphalt, just the concrete, but they worked a little bitter. Uh, northern improvement was a little bitter on the asphalt portion, a bid of a hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars, sixty cents, which was lower than the engine estimate of two thirty-five, seven thirty-two. For the concrete section, we received two bids, not three bids, a little bit deep before state's paving. An amount of two hundred twenty thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars, eighty-seven cents, with engine estimate of two hundred seventy-five thousand, sixty dollars, uh, sixty dollars. So, uh, both original improvement and border states have successfully completed projects with the city horses of the past. This is an eighty-twenty grant, so eighty percent is federal, twenty percent is local, so, um.
Yeah.
I guess we can discuss which preference you have as far as the surfacing, asphalt, concrete. There is a cost difference between the two, so, um, I guess anybody have any questions on that? Any, any guidance, I guess? So there, the, you can see the difference in the bid was almost fifty thousand dollars between the asphalt and concrete.
Guessing the concrete would probably last longer.
What's the expected life of the concrete versus asphalt?
Problem with asphalt paths is that they're not a full city street. They're only ten feet wide. They do require more maintenance than concrete. There is.
They are rougher.
Than, than concrete, that tends to be a little bit of an issue, but with some people utilizing the path. Edges can slough off, you can get cracking on, on the sides. You know, one maintenance cycle is probably fifteen years. With concrete, you get a much longer life cycle. A lot of that Lakeview Drive has a shared use path on the south side and that will be concrete. We bid that one as a alternate to the Lakeview Drive project, so that'll be concrete. This does tie into a asphalt path by the school, but, um, it is a bit of money between the two, but you do have the grant money up to one eighty-six, two one six. So, uh, your portion of that would be thirty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and change as well.
Keep moving on with the concrete trail.
Right, yeah. North you eat the maximum use on your grant, eighty-twenty would be, uh, probably two hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars be getting nice concrete trail, which is a longer lifespan, so.
Yeah, it's the main trail, um, you know, on the main road.
Right.
I was gonna say, so the asphalt would last. I mean, if you're gonna talk about longevity here, the concrete would go, what, fifteen?
Oh, a little more than that, probably twenty-five.
Five.
And asphalt, you'd probably get ten fifteen for some form of, uh, steel coat or something like that, so.
But there'd be more maintenance involved in the length.
Yeah.
My only concern is just, it's a trail, winter time, and, you know, in ATV traffic, we gotta somehow sign that to keep people off of that. In TDs, and these are gonna damage that trail. This, that's, that's gonna be a recurring issue.
Your, your, your concrete is gonna be more durable. Tip, typically, you're gonna see more of your walking paths, bicycle paths. Nowadays are more often concrete, at least in neighborhoods. You're, like Jim mentioned, you're gonna get the most out of your grant. So when you think about this, think of either one. Based on those costs, you're gonna be able to pay for eighty percent with the grant or pretty much eighty percent. The concrete option, you're gonna make the most of it. So in reality, you're looking at whatever twenty percent is of the hundred seventy-one versus the twenty percent of the two hundred twenty. That's what you're really looking at. So your cost difference is a lot smaller than it is a twenty thousand dollar cost difference for the city's share. You're maximizing federal dollars at the concrete.
Russ, you got something to add there?
I don't think it's a shared use, uh, path, but there's a sidewalk going in on the south side of seventy-six.
That's a path.
That's path, yeah, and that is concrete, it's, it's.
Yep, yep, so it'd be consistent.
Got a few hundred feet of the inventory.
Yeah, yeah, but you, I should tell you, it's going up there.
Keep us posted, will ya? Um, I guess I'd be, I'm inclined to go with concrete, yeah, just, just for the longevity and, uh, that we're dealing with here.
So if that's the case, I would, uh, request a motion contingent upon Park and Rec people. Since they are the ones who administer the grants, we would need to go with them, you know, and ask them if this is what the city prefers, see if they have any reason why that wouldn't work.
So, I have a question. Where would the other money come from then?
We'll work on that, Dave. Right now, I don't know. We're gonna talk to park board about that. That's coming.
So I'll make a motion to approve the bid, approve the bid for border state's paving, correct?
You would like to award the project border state's paving.
Okay.
And contingent on, on the buy in North Florida Park. On, contingent on, on the park board approval, right?
No, North Florida Park and Rec.
Oh, and North Florida Park and Rec.
They're the ones that administer grants.
So, I see. So after we approve this and it goes back to them for final approval, then they release the money funds. Okay, correct.
So my question is, if they approve two hundred grand, and it costs two hundred, two hundred and thirty, forty, where's the extra forty coming from the city budget? My question is, you should know that now, I would think, before you approve a contract, shouldn't you?
This would likely be funded through the highway fund.
Mm-hmm.
This will likely come from the highway fund. It could also come from the sales tax, infrastructure, but most likely we'd fund it through the highway fund.
Yep. Okay. So you made a motion? Okay, give you a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. I'll roll call it. Chelsea?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I think a lot of people would be really excited about it and it connects to Lakeview, so it's gonna be real nice. Definitely good.
Yep.
Yep, it's agreed.
All right, moving along. Lucas, you got the next one here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I do not have a letter of credit available for you tonight, however, I have a commitment letter from Town or Country Credit Union stating that they will provide the letter of credit. The reason that's taking so long is, um, the applicant switched banks. Uh, and through that process, the bank wants to know that they have, uh, funds available or have the backing for this letter of credit. So they're doing appraisal of some farmland in Trail County. And that appraisal's not gonna be done for, um, another one to two weeks. And so that's why they wanted to provide this commitment letter, saying that they, they will do it, um, in the amount of one million dollars. That's the much we requested. There's additional information on here if you want to review that. Uh, but I asked for this and I told the bank that I would talk to the council first. But I asked for this, and I told the bank that I would talk to the council first and get your approval on whether or not this will enable the project to move forward before they actually have the letter of credit available.
Okay, so that's, that came from the bank?
Yes.
When was that dated?
So it's commu, uh, it's dated on the eleventh.
Should be last Friday, really.
Uh, yeah, last Friday. And this expires August thirty-first. Okay, so we've essentially got thirty, sixty days for him to, fifty days for him to. For them to finish that and approve it. Now, what if they don't?
The, the biggest concern is the bidding.
Yeah.
Except, the bids would be awarded.
We've been dragging this out for over a month now.
To no fault of city staff.
Completely understand, it's just that, I mean, if we approve this to proceed, then we're accepting the risk that the bank is not going to.
Correct, and I talked to John Shockey about this one, and he's the one that said, just request a commitment letter. So that's what I did, the bank had no issue providing it. But it's, I told them too, it's totally up to the city council. Up to you guys really.
But there's still a chance, I mean, it's a commitment, so they're saying they will commit it, they just don't have the actual letter approved.
Because they. Contingent appraisal?
They don't have the appraisal done yet, and it's a recertification of appraisal.
Therefore, if the appraisal doesn't praise out, they probably won't grant the letter of credit.
What, Lucas, please correct me if I'm wrong. One option you do have is you could approve based on the layer of credit being received prior to the deadline at which we would have to accept or award the bid. If they did that.
Probably certainly.
Cause if you're July third, you said, or June third.
Yeah.
So we're looking at early August, that would buy a few weeks of that. Now, it's, it'd be approving with a contingency, but that could be an option. Otherwise, you could say.
Seven to ten days, right?
Yeah.
From the date of that letter, so they should have it by.
They should have it pretty soon, is the indication. Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we could approve it, and if.
If we get the layer of credit, great, then we could go through the word process.
Approve, you know, and again, even if we approve it, we can't make good contingency on there so they can't start building till we actually get the letter of credit.
You could do a contingency, it's just, it's not encouraged all the time to do contingencies, but. It, that is your.
Well, I mean, if anything, you just have to hold construction.
Yeah. But we could, we could hold off to the award letter until that layer of credit is in hand. It's not encouraged, but I'm just letting you know your different options. You could say, nope, you could say you would have to go rebid after layer credit's received, or you could do contingency. Those are a couple of different options that I see.
So there are three weeks between this council meeting and the first meeting in August. So could it be approved, the award be approved, contingent upon the letter of credit? Once the letter of credit satisfies the attorney, we can issue the award?
If the council, if the council wanted to make that action, they could. Like I said, it's, those are your different options that you would have.
Well, yeah, if letter of credit comes in, I mean, what's the other option? I mean.
I mean, or you hear it at a later date.
The other option would be just to do nothing, and then you'd have to rebid the project.
Or you could do it at a special council meeting, for example, if there was a special council meeting, you could have that, consider that time once the layer of credit is actually in hand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really, I guess, feel comfortable awarding the bid if the letter of credit isn't in. I mean, it's not like, you should, I mean, there was plenty of time to get it in.
Yeah, cause we've been at this for a while, this wasn't just a drop of the hat thing.
Yeah, I don't think that's our job to take on that responsibility, I guess, but.
So like I said, another option could be. The layer of credit, once that's in hand, then it'd be, then the mayor would be asked if you want to have, have that heard during a special council meeting. We're anticipating a special council meeting on the twenty-fifth. Due to, if you recall, our last council meeting, we had a setback issue, variance request, so that'll be heard earlier in the week by the planning commission, and then it'd be brought to council during that. That might be an option, so.
I mean, I don't, personally, I don't really, the, the letter, whatever, the, what is it? The commitment letter is here, so if it comes in, it comes in, great, I don't think, I don't personally need to know, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if we, if the letter of credit does arrive, they can, what can happen if we approve it, contingency on that reception of that letter of credit? Is it, I mean, even if we approve it, contingent on receiving that letter, can things start moving along? If it, if it arrives tomorrow, let's say for example, best case scenario, it arrives tomorrow. Can they, can the wheels start moving, or do we still have to wait till the next council meeting too?
Well, if you approve it, and then you award the contract, then yeah, the wheels can start moving whenever.
You, if you, if you approve the contract to be awarded, contingent upon layer of credit, you could do it that way. Like I said, if you really wanna see that layer of credit in hand during a special council meeting, you could have that included as an agenda item, and you could hear it during that time, gives a little bit more time for that to be heard, or for the layer of credit to actually come in hand.
Or like I said, we could contingent upon receipt again.
Yeah.
If it's satisfied or not very satisfied by the administrator, then things gonna be starting.
Yeah.
I mean, our tracker is, is gonna be going, just putting it out there.
Obviously, they always are.
I know.
Got it. But, wanna make sure that we got the city covered here too.
Well, yeah, we have to just, we have to follow the steps, I guess, I don't think we should, so.
So if there, if there's another council meeting on the twenty-fifth, I, I agree, but if we're gonna, gonna have a special meeting.
Yeah, we've already.
Make, if we've already waited this long, why not?
Russ, what do you got?
Just remembering a past issue, we had, so we get the letter of credit and award it and start sort of, is this some money that you owe, is this a temporary, you already have temporary bond with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're there, that's the, we're, yeah.
I do wanna see us get burned again.
No. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
So personally, I don't, I don't know that we really need to see the letter, do we? I mean, if it comes in, just get going, don't you think?
Well, but then, then we're approving based on this letter of commitment, though.
Well, you've already approved your, your letter of credit amount, and you have that in your improvement district agreement. So that is, it's me just ensuring, your improvement district agreement says, upon satisfactory approval or review of the city attorney. And so you approve the amount that that letter of credit has to be, and then I review the letter of credit to make sure that it.
As long as Lucas is good with the letter, and they get it, then just get going.
You guys never approve the letters, you approve the.
Yeah, you approve the award.
That, right, you approve the award, right, based on them receiving it.
Like you say, Ryan, I just don't want it to come in tomorrow or Wednesday, and two weeks down the line, we have to look at it again.
It's really neat they're here over there.
Well, I mean, what is the downside if we wait till that special council meeting? Does it affect anything?
Fine.
It, it's a time, if the layer of credit was to come in tomorrow. If the council approved it based on contingency, we could, we could give that, no, or awarding the contract to the contractor this week. If the layer of credit came in next week, it probably, say later part of next week, it wouldn't have that much of impact on this. So it, it is just a timing, when would that come in?
Well, that's what I mean.
So you're looking at, it's not this Thursday, but the following Thursday is when that special council meeting would be. So, yeah, if the layer of credit came in here next week early, then it won't make a difference. But, then you have the assurances that you're able to see, yep, there's layer of credit in hand, you're able to see that, now.
But you're saying that Town or Country has said, that, that John has said, that this is, I mean, it's not binding, but the bank has said that they're gonna grant the, the letter of credit.
Yeah, this is not binding, is my understanding.
Well, they put it in writing.
Yeah, they put it in writing, but.
Still has to have her, we're not allowing it on this.
Well, we're approving it based, well.
He has to have a letter of credit.
He has to write, the letter of credit has to arrive. It's just a matter of, are we going to wait till the next council meeting?
But if Lucas looks at it, I mean.
Agreed, but what if it doesn't arrive in the next two weeks?
Then you could hear it at your next council meeting, yeah, the worst case scenario, I mean, not the worst case.
If it doesn't arrive, it can't be awarded, the contract cannot be awarded, so the contract would not be awarded.
So that's where we would put the contingency on, to say.
Yes.
It can't be awarded until that letter of credit arrives.
So you could do that, you could table it, either one of those, there's a lot of different options you have.
I guess I'm inclined to go with the contingent upon getting the.
Right, that's what I was saying, right.
Yeah, cause we wanna make sure we have that in hand, I mean, this is nice, but it's not binding, you know, we need to get that in hand. There's been plenty of time, so.
So we're gonna do, you wanna see it at the next meeting, or?
No, I don't know if we have to.
Resolution, awarding the bid, contingent on the letter of credit being received.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so Chelsea makes a motion.
I'll say it.
Brian makes his second, all in favor say aye.
Move on.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, passes, alright. Move on, number twelve, Jim.
Oh, yes. Cup Creek Water, Sewer, Storm, and Street Improvement District number two thousand nineteen dash six. Bits were opened on Thursday, July eleventh. Received bits from three contractors, Dakota Underground, KPH, and Celine Brothers. Bid tabulation, you've got up there of three bidders. The apparent low bidder for the project was Dakota Underground Company of Fargo with a base, with a bid of. So the project was bid two ways, one was with asphalt streets, one with concrete streets. And the alternative, the base bid was asphalt streets, or no, the base bid was concrete streets, excuse me. And that was five million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and thirty-five cents, which was less than the engineer's estimate of six million, one hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred twenty hundred dollars and twenty cents. Alternate number one was a deductive alternate to use the two minutes or hundred, asphalt pavement. And that was five million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. That was less than the engineer's estimate of five million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents. So, this project, we discussed the link, we bid the project as to which type of pavement surface was preferred, like weights and pros and cons of concrete, asphalt. I think that one of the, one of the considerations that we've been thinking about throughout this is there, this Cup Creek area is gonna have specials for multiple projects in that area, and I'm not really sure if the additional cost of concrete streets is justified at this time. It is a residential subdivision with a small amount of mixed use to the north, I guess I should say small, but an amount of mixed use on the north, so. We discussed it, Adam, Brad, you wanna have some comments on this one? It is almost four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I did look at the prices for, we repriced that. So, the asphalt option is for four and a half inches, it's not a full paved section, it's typical, booked in a per grew loss river. Put in the base lift of asphalt, come back in after a certain amount of, certain amount of instruction, completed homes, and put the final lift up, and that counts for the settlement, and it counts for any type of issues that could happen. So, I read the numbers, went through what a maintenance cycle would be, and that would include the inch and a half of asphalt and a seal coat. And we're at about two hundred and sixty-six thousand in round numbers, two hundred and sixty thousand in round numbers. So, we're still only about halfway to that difference between the two materials, so.
What I would say, ideally, you'd wanna go with whatever the strongest road is, which would be a concrete road, would be stronger. If your concern is regards to special assessments, costs, asphalt is a little cheaper. This area is going to have special assessments hit from multiple different projects, so sixty-third, seventy-six, and its actual development costs internally are flat out. So, I know the developer is, would request that it would be asphalt due to that, or just keep in mind the cost of specials. It's up to council, it would set the precedence probably, or the tone of any developments in the future. If you go with concrete, the expectation is probably gonna lean more towards concrete for residential developments. If you're gonna go asphalt, that's more of the norm right now. So it's where do you, where do you wanna go? Originally, earlier today, my stance was concrete, hundred percent. Now, I'm, I'm more on the, I'd be more on the fence right now, seeing, keeping in mind the cost of specials. If you wanna keep those costs a little down, or down a little bit, I mean, it's not gonna be a ton when you're talking this five, six million dollar project, but it does help keep it down. So if you wanna keep that in mind, like I said, this area, they're gonna have to be facing specials for sixty-third and seventy-six. If they didn't have those other projects, then I would probably push hard, hard saying, hey, concrete is probably the route we should really consider. But they have those other projects that are gonna get them, or get. Impact their specials, so. So that, pros and cons, like I said, does set the tone for future developments.
The second lift, is that in contingencies, or how is that money, where's that?
That would be another, likely, another round of special assessment. The reason why is because with the temporary financing approach that we're taking, that is really getting down to, folks are paying for those improvements to the road as those costs are more occurring in a closer timeline. If we didn't do temp bonding, or we could roll the costs of an estimate, there may be money left over. It all depends on oil prices, so it allows us to get to the cost more exact of what actually is going to be. So, as for that second lift, it would likely be a second round of special assessment a few years down the road, when that development builds out more, so. It wouldn't be immediate, it'd probably impact them, I'm guessing, about three to five years out. So, there would be some break on the specials.
So, like right now, though, if we did, if we did concrete, we wouldn't have to go through that actually.
Concrete would be, you build it, you're done.
That's what I mean, so that's what.
Now, the timeline wise too, with this, concrete, it does take longer to build that road because you have to deal with cure times versus asphalt, once they lay it, pack it down, smooth it out. They could do that in a lot shorter period of time.
What I'm getting at, though, is that, we got the specials here, three years down the road, we're gonna have to tap them again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Realistically, five, seven years down the road.
Right, but you're still tapping.
Is the second lift on, is it shuttle wood, is that, no, and that's a pretty bad, it's pretty bad.
Thirty-six was really too good a meeting for, for all that, there's a lot of haul in during all the rest of that stuff, so.
Do they, are they gonna get their second lift soon?
Yeah, it's probably when they're on that's going on, five years, already.
So that's sort of standard practice to do that second lift.
Per U doesn't have it yet, but he has lost root for care guards, they're all.
Yeah.
Oh, right, just because there's just a construction traffic and everything, and, and there's going to be settling on those roads too, cause that's the other element, is, is this land is, it's going to settle in that area, we don't know how, right? Where, if there's concrete, it's harder to repair concrete versus you can do a mill, overlay, fix, patch, it's much easier with asphalt.
That second lift really smooths all the settling out, it's nice, yeah.
So you turn around and award this contract, and then before anything happens, you gotta get a letter of credit for the developer to?
The layer of credit, we've already received a layer of credit from the developer. Once the bid is awarded, they're able to revise the layer of credit based on the problem, or the engineer's statement.
Is that a fifty percent or seventy-five percent one?
This one was at fifty percent.
Um, my opinion, I guess, is since it's standard to do asphalt, then I would put it in the, I would ask the developer what they prefer. I mean, concrete is obviously gonna give them a nicer development. But, the next developer that comes along and gets a higher, maybe the concrete's higher price, then we let them do asphalt. And, you know, if we didn't give this developer a choice, then are we gonna give the next developer a choice?
If I mean, this, you know, the fact that the workforce housing is here, and we're talking like it's only one or two or three or four thousand dollars, it's no big deal. That's, that's the difference between someone qualifying for a house and being able to move into the development or not.
Yeah.
So, you know, also if it's a, if there's one other development in that show that has concrete roads and it's river spin, and all the. Majority of those lots and the specials are at over a hundred thousand dollars. Granted, they're large blocks, but the perception and scale of that development is not what we're trying to do here.
Makes sense.
I would love to build a big house with full brick, right? But economics is the law for.
I'm inclined, I'm inclined asphalt is, is going to be an easier maintenance. It's going to be less, less maintenance down the road. I mean, there's going to be more maintenance, more frequent, but yet it's cheaper to fix things.
Okay.
That may go along, so.
And sixty-third street is being concrete and arterial. These are local, right here for the street. So we're not talking about an arterial or even collector. These are just the local streets.
Well, and that, that's it. The collector road should be concrete. The neighborhood area should be asphalt. So, but there again, that's the lead up to that to get the recommendation there. Anyway, okay.
So we're looking for a motion.
So I was just saying, we'll make a motion to approve the bid to.
Northerly, Dakota.
Dakota Underground.
You want to do asphalt option one.
So you want to do the base bid plus alternate.
Base with alternate.
Base bid plus alternate number one.
Yep, base bid plus alternate one, four or five point three million.
Okay, so Brian makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea is the second. A roll call. Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, on to the next. Thirteen, Lucas, you got that one?
Mr. Mayor, the first item I have is the improvement district agreement for maybe like a state's addition. Not sure if you've had the chance to review this idea agreement. Just know it, so.
It's a standard.
Yeah, the only thing that's different with this one is the developer has requested it to be done in phases. So it's actually two phases. Phase one consists of underground utilities, site grading and earthwork. And phase two consists of above ground street improvements.
Okay, so he's going to do one this fall, right?
He wants to try to get one done this summer into this fall, and then bid out the streets this fall slash winter and then start that up.
Okay, yeah, we talked about that a little back.
But in terms of the impact of the development, that's not going to affect anything from, you know, from the city standpoint, right? Whether they phase it over two years or.
No, and I put it, I put it in the, in the agreement that with the letter of credit, they can either provide two letters of credit, one now for phase one, and then another for phase two. Or just revise the phase one letter of credit to include, yeah, to improve the cost of phase two as well. So that's, that's the biggest difference in there. This letter of credit also has seventy-five percent as the letter of credit amount, not fifty.
The new standard.
Yep. Approve that with your resolution a couple months ago.
Yep.
And then part dedication, forty thousand dollars, which we've discussed many times. And yeah, those are the, those are the main differences.
Okay.
She was looking for a motion to approve that.
Improvement district agreement, and then I'll send it to the, to the developer.
The developer's agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's, we call it the improvement district agreement, because the city will be paying for the infrastructure.
So are they, just a second, are they planning to get going here soon with this, with the initial party as soon as we get?
Yeah, so we were going to have, I mean, Jim and I were ready for them to do the residential improving plans and specs, and then authorize the order to advertise for bids tonight. Right then, now they want to.
We met with them on Friday. There's some earthwork items they want to go over, and they're better off to try it, to wait, discuss it.
Yeah.
Then try to push it through in two weeks.
Sure.
I'm a lot more comfortable going through and vetting out some of the dirt work quantities and some of the foot, foot plan requirements prior to bidding it, so.
Well, that's because that was my, my follow-up question would be then, so they will be able to get this first phase done by Frieza?
We will see what come. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow with Terry and Matt and Brent.
There, that's I just.
For some of it, and then developer, and we'll know more after that. It's just, we had a meeting on Friday morning, and that's what I said. I, like, I want to pull back, just relook at what's going on.
What's the realistic expectations here, so we know what we're dealing with here, and that's why I think, if you guys have that meeting, then we'll know a little bit more.
We sold on the bid last week. We got three bidders on it. One of them was very high, so.
Okay.
Might be tough to get it done this year, my own.
Okay, fair enough. All right, let's, I want to, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the development first agreement.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Get a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, resolution necessity and amend resolution creating the district?
I'll get it back here in a minute.
Resolution.
Yep, so B, this project will actually need a resolution of necessity because the improvement district boundary is large for this one. Because it includes, San Texer improvements, is that right? So it's larger than just the development, and so in this instance, the development itself isn't a majority of the land in that improvement district. So we'll actually have to publish that resolution necessity to get any other property owners that are involved in that district the opportunity to object to this.
Sure.
So this property is south of one hundredth Avenue, west of Country Acres, and northeast of what would be the diversion. And in an effort to try to minimize and capitalize on the number of lift stations the city of Morris has, that lift station to service Maple Lakes. Has that larger regional component to handle what's inside of that at that diversion. So that's why the district gets to be so large for this one.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I'll make the motion to approve that resolution of necessity.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Get a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, that motion carries. We're going to table C and D until the future, I guess, next, probably next meeting. All right, so then with that, we will move to number fourteen. Lucas and Brent wants to pick it up.
Okay, what we have here, Lucas expand anywhere appropriate, or you see. Currently, the city does not have a municipal judge that has made it to where everything is deferred to Cass County District Court or Cass County. By having a municipal judge, the traffic citations, where the ordinance violations, anything like that would be heard through the city's municipal court. What we're looking for is an appointment of a judge. This appointment would be until the next election, and then that position would be elected, would be elected official. So we have had an individual come out. She's a resident of Horace. Her name is Jessica Chumitsky. She was unable to make it here tonight, but can we coordinate another time for her to come and make presence to, to you? She does have her attorney's license for the state of North Dakota, is my understanding. Is not a requirement for the city, for a city the size of under five thousand in population. However, it is nice to have. That way it has some stability when the city does achieve over five thousand if that person was elected into a position later date. So we're looking for is an appointment of municipal judge. Recommendation would be considered Jessica Chuminsky for this position. And then, like I said, they would be up for election at the next election time period.
Twenty twenty or?
Maybe a twenty twenty election.
Yeah.
Pretty much, okay.
Yep. Is there any other items there to?
Did you want to discuss compensation?
Uh, compensation. In, in coordinating with Lucas, we're looking at what is appropriate compensation, because these positions do have some compensation. So council, planning commission, there is some compensation in the form of a salary or like a stipend. Lucas has fallen in the Supreme Court, has established minimum recommendations for compensations based on city populations. City currently our size, I believe he said, under three thousand, the compensation was around two hundred and fifty dollars. I think it was two fifty-eight? Yep. Two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month.
Okay.
However, that's at three thousand. The next level went up to around three fifty?
Three forty-three.
Three forty-three. So that's at the next level. We're hovering right here on that next level. And comparing it to other positions like planning commission compared to council. My recommendation for council would be consider four hundred. That would be due to, you'd be just above the minimum from the Supreme Court recommendation. And then also it falls kind of in between planning commission and council amount. This would be, it cannot be decreased during that person's term. But then at the next election, it could be redetermined of, okay, what is the proper compensation should be lowered or higher or decreased or increased at that time. And so we thought, my recommendation to council would be go with four hundred, and then we could evaluate it at that time of election to see where it'd be the best. A dollar amount at that time. We could see how much municipal board is being used and consider those different factors such as that.
Does the city have to provide benefits and stuff to the city?
No, no. It'd be considered like a part-time or stipend, so typically benefits aren't given to you full-time.
All right, so.
I make a motion to approve Jessica, there's some other discussion.
When would she be starting? Or when would she, when would she be able to?
So she'll have to go through a course, through the North Dakota Court Administrator's Office, and I'm not sure how long it said that was.
I just think, are we looking at September, October, November type of?
We're looking at likely, I'm going to make a assumption or guess, it'd be a couple months. By the time to coordinate getting the training, completing that. We're looking at probably, I'm guessing about a month, half or so, but we would coordinate with her on that.
Yep, just more spare expectations.
Once you make the appointment and the council makes the confirmation, then she's your new municipal judge. And then she's required to get her training done within, I think it's like within three months of taking office. And then she's also required to do, get her CLEs, continuing learning education or continuing legal education. That attorneys are required to do, and that judges are required to do in North Dakota. So she'll have to do that every three years. She has to get like eighteen credits. Those are her requirements.
I was just trying to set some expectations here, when we could anticipate bringing her online.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as, like I said, as soon as it's confirmed, she's the judge, when will she actually be needed, we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, right now with the tickets, the traffic tickets, so far we're going to Cass County, so. I mean, so potentially, we could have that person start tomorrow if we could, but.
Yeah, and so even if, even if they are issuing those tickets to city Horace, there has to be a contested ticket before it actually goes to municipal court. But yes, the city will now have to work on setting up, ensuring that all the technology is ready to go, the paperwork's ready, so once you're online, then.
There's no additional other tools or anything that we would need to purchase for this position? Any access?
Just says technology resources.
Any subscriptions or anything that the state?
We, we would vet, we would vet that out. We would, but.
I'm just thinking from, you know, to be a member of the state level.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, do they have, do we have to pay for them to be part of this? You know, I don't know.
Are you aware of any other costs?
Uh, no.
I'm not aware of any other ones.
The mayor's okay with her using the gavel? You check that cost off.
Yeah, I think we can make an allowance there, yeah.
The gavel?
I think we can handle that.
So it just says that each courtroom must be furnished with, and then it just lists all the items, and it looks like the city has everything that it needs. It just says technology resources sufficient to meet the needs of the courts. That might be the only one. The only one where you.
Yeah.
You might need to, to invest in, and I don't know what technology that would be, I guess, just depending on how you're going to.
Sure.
Handle your case for.
Yep.
Okay, because I was saying, you know, if those municipal tickets go to the county, and is there some handling of those tickets in the county that we would have to tap into to get access to that? I don't, I don't know.
We, we would, we, we would coordinate with municipal courts, or the municipal courts, and also the county on that transition.
Yeah, so now.
And also the judge, so.
And if you approve this thing, then Brent will contact the North Dakota court system, and then they'll help the city get that figured out.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I'll make a motion to approve Jessica, what do you pronounce last name?
Lewis, Chumitsky.
Chumitsky?
Yeah.
For the position in municipal court with a salary of four hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so Brian.
Starting as soon as possible.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea was the second. Um, do we need a roll call this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Chelsea?
Yes.
And me too, so, yes. All right, so let's get that going so we can try and get that completed this fall.
Yep.
It's huge.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Thanks for doing that.
Brent, Jim, you guys got the title compliance here?
Title six, I'll, Jim, if you want to highlight any more on it from what I have on, is in coordination with the North Dakota Parks and Recs. They're asking that all cities that are grant recipients of federal highway funds or federal funding through them, they would be title six compliant. Essentially what this is, is saying that you'd be. You'd have some, you'd have some assurance, assurances or certifications that we'd have to sign off and commit to, just saying that we would not discriminate based on race or gender. Or protected classes when it comes to paying the project. This is pretty common with any federally funded project through federal highway. One thing I'd be working, I'd reach out to MetroCog to ask them if we're covered under their compliant, or title six compliance, or if we could just adopt what they have. Because I know that metropolitan planning organizations, so like MetroCog, they have to have this anyways. So a lot of times cities are able to just piggyback off of their paperwork. But just more of just saying, you know, that we're working towards this compliance. If there are no issues with council, I don't, I would not expect any.
In essence, it's going to be an ordinance. It's.
It's, it's not, it's not an ordinance. It's more of just a policy. It's just saying assurance and saying that this is how we're going to do business. And it allows us to.
Policy.
Yeah, and it allows us, is adopting a policy, and it allows us to work closer with North Dakota Department of Parks and Rec. In order to administer our own project, so.
So as, as you recall, why this came up was that the recreational program grant is administered by Park and Rec. And they have to bid it because they are title six compliant. Most municipalities aren't title six compliant. But Park and Rec is now emphasizing the importance of becoming title six qualified for these cities. Part of the reason for that is the way that the reimbursements work for the money. I believe it adds that they need the city as a title six compliant, you can bid the projects, hopefully, you know, something weren't able to do, that's why the bid opening had to be at this mark with Park and Rec. And you can also pay the contractor directly. You don't have to wait for reimbursement. And part of the reason they want to help the cities get to be at title six is that they, there's not a lag in the payment period. Because they're finding that these smaller communities are getting the money, and it's a long time for reimbursement to get back to the contractor. So once the contractor does the work, the city says, yes, the work's been done. They request the money from Park and Rec, or from Park and Rec, and then it gets paid. What they're finding is some of these contractors that do these smaller type recreation projects don't like to carry that for any period of time. And they're finding that if the cities are title six, they can do more at the local level and have to be a little bit more quicker and not having to have that contractor carry anything. So it's something that is relatively new with Park and Rec, that they're trying to get all these communities in there, like Brent said. It's a lot of assurances, it's a lot of just making sure that you're non-discriminatory. It's, a lot of stuff is already followed. It's just a matter of having a policy in place that describes it, so. It's a lot of assurances, it's a lot of just making sure that you're non-discriminatory. It's, a lot of stuff is already followed. It's just a matter of having a policy in place that describes it, so.
I mean, it's really not going to change, it could protect us by having this policy in place, but there's nothing different that we're going to do tomorrow. Because we have or don't have this policy in place.
It, it just allows us to bid projects that, for our grants that we receive from North Dakota Department of Parks and Recs. Um, is assurances that we're not, we'd be non-discriminatory. It's.
As long as it, it opens the door for us.
It helps to streamline processes.
Exactly. It's, it's a streamlining of the process and, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So, yeah, I mean, do we need direct? Any staff to go assemble this or?
I, I don't believe you need to do any action on that. Um, what we'll do is, when it comes, it's more awareness. I was originally going to ask the council to direct us to do that, but I don't believe we need to do that. Uh, what we'll do is, once we have those different certifications, the assurances available or put together, we'll bring those back to council for action. Uh, if there's not much of it, if we don't anticipate much of a discussion, I am, I'll probably put them on, uh, the consent agenda. And then if you do want to have deeper discussion on that, we can pull it off consent, put it on regular agenda. But I want to make sure you're aware of it, though, where the reason why we're pursuing this. Uh, it isn't necessarily normal, uh, from my experience working with NPOs and federal highway funds. However, I could see the logic from North Dakota Parks and Rec, uh, they're wanting us to streamline or help with the bidding process, things like that. So if we're going to apply for future RTP grant funds, we're going to need to have this anyways to be able to help our.
They're, they're making it required.
Yeah, right. So we might as well just knock it out.
It makes sense.
To help us out.
Okay, they did provide, the federal highway administration provided some guidance on that and Park and Rec provided some guidance on that. They are Title Six compliant, so a lot of the stuff that they have up there can be reared to the city of course.
Is this something that we build or do you build that or?
You guys do it.
We, we typically would follow a template.
That's what I'm saying. If there are examples, we could use this, like we have to pay somebody to.
It's, it's pretty simple. Uh, I've worked with this before on the NPO side, near metropolitan planning organization side of things. Uh, it's pretty standard from each, depend, based on those entities, I think we're going to have pretty, pretty similar to what even MetroCog has to have, so.
Make a motion for policy?
There's no.
Oh, we don't have to.
No, we don't need. Awareness, so.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
We're done chatting on that, then we'll move to sixteen, then let's talk budget.
Okay. What we see before you is just to show you where we're at on a draft general fund budget for revenues expenditures. It is a increase for the budget of approximately, uh, forty-five thousand dollars, forty-six thousand dollars. Increase from revenues and expenditures is primarily, this is due to, um, the increase in property evaluations. Uh, what, what I'll be proposing, I'm not looking for any action from council tonight. It's just to show you that yes, we're working on this. This is going to have some refining. It will look a little different than when it is brought to council for draft or for seeing the preliminary budget. However, what you're going to be asked is, do you want to increase the mills? Decrease? Do the best we can to keep them the same? At the next council meeting, you're going to be asked that. Uh, what I'm proposing is do the best that we can based on the most current information that we have from Cass County, uh, for property evaluations to keep the mills as close as we can to the same. That is the general feedback that I've gotten from earlier discussions from the council and throughout the year. You know, intentions are to keep the mills right at about the same, so therefore your only increase would be due to valuations for, when we're talking just the property tax revenue. And we're going to have other influencers that affect our general fund for revenues and expenditures. Revenues would be, uh, building permits, for example. We've implemented new rates for commercial and residential. That's going to impact your general fund budget. We're anticipating the high school building permit at that time. That is, the middle school building permit was just over a hundred thirty thousand dollars. We know that the high school is a bigger building. So I know that the building permit for that is going to be significantly higher. We also anticipate more residential house building permits, so you're going to see a substantial jump compared to even this year on revenues and expenses related to building permits. Uh, state aid is anticipated to increase slightly. Uh, we've used in the past a very, very conservative, uh, estimate for state aid, which isn't always bad, but, uh, we're trying to be a little closer to what the anticipated stated distribution is going to be. Uh, so there's an increase there. What we do have is a.
Potential revenue from the pre-doc funding.
That's a different, that's a whole different ballgame or a different deal. So, that wouldn't be general fund. That's a sec, kind of like the sales tax or a more of a grant funding, so.
It was like infrastructure.
We would track that through a separate.
That's a separate needs, yeah. What I'm fo- focusing on right now is just general fund. I want to keep your focus on general fund and not all the other stuff at the time. Uh, what you'll see also with state aid distribution is, we were discussing at the last council meeting, uh, sharing some of the state aid. Park Board will be discussing where we left off of the possibility of the city sharing ten percent. Perhaps a gradual working up of that increase of sharing in future years. Uh, also Fire Board, they are eligible, or the Fire, of course, Fire District would be eligible for, uh, sharing distributed, some of the state aid funds with, uh, I know Cory and I will be meeting with the Fire Board here shortly to talk about that with them. So, those are impacts on our expenditures, something that hasn't been done in the past before. So, what you'll see are different components there. Another area that we're working on is utility franchise fees. Currently, the city has three utility franchise agreements. We have one with an organization that doesn't exist really in this area anymore. NSP are in order to stay in power. That is the replacement, or that is naturally defaulted to, well, at a time after NSP, it was our tail power. And then it's become Cass County Electric, but we need to update that agreement. Uh, that, those franchise agreements, a lot of times will generate revenues for the city, so we're working on that. Uh, updating our other two franchise agreements that we have for cable providers, MigCo and Cable One. So there's potential revenue, or there's revenue from that, revising those agreements. And then we found other utility con, utility companies that do operate or have utilities located in our right ways. So, uh, Lucas and I are working on gay-nosed utility franchise agreements. Uh, contacting those co- those companies and starting negotiating out a franchise agreements for those that we can propose to council. Uh, also by having those franchise agreements, it'll help streamline when we're working on a road project. We'd be able to outline when they're responsible for costs versus when we are responsible for costs. It also aligns of, if the utility company has a franchise agreement with us, a lot of times, one common thing I've seen is where they're exempt from our permit fees for like a right-of-way permit. But it encourages that communication. We can also help encourage having a central, central point of contact with those companies. So at certain positions, saying if we have an issue, we're able to get hold of somebody. It's a nice luxury to have when the power goes out, instead of calling the eight-hundred number, you have a direct person to talk to and say, hey, what's going on? Tell me what we need to know so we can share it with our residents and we can get more direct information, uh, from those utility providers, so. Those are a couple of areas, um. Also court costs, obviously we'll have more court co- costs, having a municipal court, at least budgeting for it, so. As for.
Court fees are.
Court fee, yeah, co- well, costs associated with court, so.
Well, they, oh, I see.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's an expense side.
Yeah. Um, as for expenses, a couple of things, there'd be, uh, some changes, it's just how we reflect costs for, um, insurance and also then costs for staff. We've had increases in the amount of our staff. So that would be, um, that'd be a reason why that number has gone up. Those are the primary factors. And then for professional services, the reason why there'd be an increase in that would be for commercial buildings, i.e. like the school or in commercial properties, uh, we contract that out with more engineering. Uh, we keep our internal inspector, our staff for, uh, residential inspections, but the commercial, we outsource that. So we would have costs for other professional services for inspections, commercial buildings, so. Like I said, that comes out to roughly a fifty thousand dollar increase in overall budget and that is targeting staying as close as possible to our current bills. Last year we did that. We focused on estimate. We went to about two thousand dollars under what the county had for the estimate and we ended up being, I believe it was roughly a half a mil increase or slightly, right around that ballpark. So we're trying to refine that still and go a little further lower than what they're giving us as estimate. Hopefully we could hit it even more accurate or even closer. So we're doing the best we can to focus on keeping that mill rate equal as much as possible. Any questions tied to general fund or, like I said, this is going to be brought to council at the August fifth meeting. At that meeting, you'd have the preliminary, draft preliminary general fund budget. By approving that, you're going to be capping our property tax levying authority. We cannot go any higher, but we could go lower for that. Then what we do is set a date for the public hearing for the bud, for the general fund budget. That public hearing would be held between September seventh and October seventh. So you'd have the public hearing and then you could approve the general fund budget at that time. I like to do it, council has come back later with utilities. The reason why utilities are not required to be as part of that budget. If we're able to have them together, then we will. But last year, for example, we came back in December with the budget tied to the utilities. The reason why is, then you have more accurate or hopefully a better number. And especially with our changes in rate, we'll be able, if we have a few more months worth of data, then we'd be able to see the true impacts of that rate increase and how that's impacting those, those budgets.
So you have cash coming in, you have cash coming out. How much general fund money do you have excess in this town of ours? You know, I mean, right, your budget is forty-five thousand to the, do you have a million or two million dollars set aside in rate day fund? Or whatever, so if you have a major issue, that without going through all the other processes, you can support it. And you have sales tax. You don't, you didn't include the sales tax in your budget, correct? Because that's specialized for only certain projects in the town.
The sales tax is a separate fund.
Yeah.
It's a separate fund. We're talking general fund. So yes, as a separate fund. As for building reserves, currently the city has a fund balance, so that's just what's in that fund. But dedicated reserves, the city hasn't had those. So what this is also doing is trying to establish some of those reserves, even playing a little bit aside to get some into reserve. That's what we're trying to do too.
So in your budget, then you have a line item that says.
Yes.
For reserve, you're going to put that money in a special reserve and you're not going to use it?
That would be, that's the intention, is to start building reserves for your general fund reserve, equipment reserve, and then each different fund. Slowly start building those reserves because we don't have them. Yes, there's a line item.
And then also, do you have a current balance sheet with all your letters of credit and all that stuff?
That's what we're working on still with our new finance director and, uh, the coin software.
Okay, and then one other question that I'll be quiet on, is the fact that now you got your budget and you got your sales tax budget. You got all these budgets you're going to present to your council, you know, not just the general budget, everyone. You know, how much you get, okay, then you're going to put footnotes on the bottom of your budget, talking about the potential of increasing through your state or whatever, that there could be additional money of X and X and X, some footnotes on the bottom. If all this comes together, because you talked a little bit about the potential of getting additional money through some of these projects.
Well, depending on the funding source and how, what could impact that budget.
Cause I think the council would like that in a footnote on the bottom, so they understand that there's a potential that they'll have more revenue coming in to add to a general fund, instead of just discussing it and hoping it comes.
But it's still wishful thinking. You don't know.
Yeah, it is wishful thinking.
That's why it's, I mean.
Paper.
Yeah.
This is a requirement for what we have to do to the county to set the mill rate. Nothing else.
We're, we're focusing.
For you as a council, I would think you'd want more information than just that.
Right, but it'd be nice, but what can we, other than we can look at that number, but it still isn't, we don't know. That's, that's fishing.
Your mind and when you look at your budget.
We're, we're.
That's enough with me. I don't care.
I know, I just.
I don't know if financial stuff works.
Yeah. What, what I would stress is that with a lot of our approach for fun, for the budgets, they're fund-based. So if there's a new funding source, like Prairie Dog, you mentioned Prairie Dog, that is a totally, that'd be a totally separate budget. That'd be a separate fund. Um, having a description of what's going on with the different funds, that's part of the overall budget. The budget is taking a drastic change for how we do budgeting. Historically, you say a horse has never budgeted for all these different funds, such as highway fund, water, utilities, sewer, actually utilities, water, sewer and garbage, we're all combined together. We're separating those out. The reason why you separate them out is so we know where shortfalls are or could be. So, there, the budgeting process is a lot more robust than what we've had in the past. We're saying up, working towards saying reserves for each of those funds, even if it's a little bit, even if we could put five thousand dollars a year aside, which is a very small amount when you're looking at these different budgets. But slowly gain those established and if there's excess funds available, if we come in under budget on things and we're able to build those reserves up. Cause yes, we should have a rate day, you know, I hate to call it a rate day fund, it's a reserve fund. That backup in case there's something that happens that we need to draw up on it. We don't have a whole lot of that right now. We have money in fund balance, but not a dedicated reserve. So, that's what we're trying to do is get that established, that structure established, so that we have those. It's going to take a while. It's going to take a couple of years to even get anything substantial into those reserves. Uh, but that does help the city also in the future when it comes to, if we were to ever bond against a general fund, we'll call it GO bond, that helps us. We need to have those reserves in place. So we have those targets, but that's going to take time to get there.
Yep.
So.
That's just.
We're focusing on the structure at this time.
So you prepared this thing that needed to go through the approval process, but you, the council members and the mayor, they would probably want, not just this, they want to break down everything else.
They're, they're going to see a lot.
Make a decision and vote in August.
There will be a lot more information, yes. This is just to focus on general fund and focus on, hey, there's some, there's some changes coming.
Yep.
So.
This is where we got to start.
Yep. That's all I have for.
Good.
Yep.
Got any questions? Alright, thank you Brent. Let's move on then. Jim, what do we got on the engineering public work side?
A lot of things happened today. Finished up the chip seal on Maple Grove at North and Southwood. That is the last thing that remains of the Southwood project, so that was three mil. They haven't scraped the chips yet, but we'll all go to where that one is complete. Uh, Lakeview Drive, Santeras River was started this morning. They're starting a new lift station, uh, lift station number eighteen, heading up to Seventy-Ninth Avenue from there. I believe that the hand ports for the Roundabout are complete. At least they're very close to being completed. They're not, so now every subsequent port will be mostly machine. It's only longer stretches. Something will really start taking shape on that.
Do they think they're still on schedule with the rain delay from last week or what?
Well, yeah, they, they've really been pushing on that project to get done what they can and so they've had, like Russ said, they've already got, I don't remember how many feet of shared use path in already, and that extends beyond the Roundabout. So where they've just got the base work in, they've got sidewalk placed and shared use path placed further east of that. So they've been able to take advantage of some of the lighter days, shorter days, good terrain or whatever and, and work on the areas that are maybe not right in the middle, but smaller pieces that need to get done, smaller pieces. and work on the areas that are maybe not right in the middle, but smaller pieces that need to get done, smaller pieces of the project. So um sewer main, well, like I said, it'll continue tomorrow, but it'll continue until complete. But the initial start was, was today, through the way regards, I mean.
So they're still projecting when for a at least seven or the roundabout open?
Uh everything is leading to April, October, August seventeenth.
August what, seventeenth, yeah.
That is the published completion date, that was what they have to be done by, so.
And they're be, they're work, they're making good progress towards hitting that date, so.
Yeah.
That's a key thing, so basically about a month. Good, almost a month left, okay.
Um it's starting, kept going on the source sewer last week on Seventy-Sixth Avenue, so that was, and that started on the east end, so they're progressing westward. Once they get the roundabout concrete, they'll put the traffic and allow elements of those to go out through the roundabout while they keep going to the west east.
Well, I think that.
Those are the highlights of the busy day today.
Okay.
What's the completion for Lakeview?
Lakeview Drive is November second for underground and there any base work, and June twentieth for paving.
Okay, no, good, move on, just things are moving along, so. Anything?
Uh do you have a target completion date for the water tower? Casper water tower?
Uh that is June of twenty twenty.
Oh, so they actually won't be online till June?
No, they were, yeah, they said that, that was gonna, they're trying to schedule it so it'll be open and ready to go at the same time in middle school.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's based on the contract.
Month ahead of it, so they can run it through its paces and.
Yeah, getting it, I like Russ had pointed out, they're starting to steal it actually for the reservoir and started placing steel today and they built it on the bottom. There's a lot of work that goes into the inside coating and all that.
Right.
That is going to happen at a cooler time, so they're using some more temperature sensitive or less temperature sensitive coatings and coatings for that, so. I think they're on, on schedule, they're a little bit shooting up out of the ground.
Mm-hmm.
That is a Casper water, interesting, so, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those water towers take a while.
They do.
Okay, anything else?
All right.
Move along, Matt?
Uh just a couple of things really quick, uh the economic development group met the other night. Corey was there, maybe he has some things to add later. We uh they're reviewing the draft of the marketing plan that the same consultants that helped us assemble this group put together this branding and marketing plan. So we're doing the draft and we continue to make the baby steps forward in order to create a, you know, a true economic development advisory group. Smart Gov continues to be successful, we keep making little changes in it. Uh we continue to encourage the public to apply on Smart Gov. We anticipate uh being able to do inspections on it by the end of the year. Inspections are, they're tricky because we also have a commercial inspector and um the way that it's been built out, there are some types of inspections under certain permits that we don't always do. And so we're still trying to figure out what the best path forward on that is, but in terms of building permit intake and land entitlements, we can do that full stop now in Smart Gov. There's two new ordinances that planning commission will be seeing soon, which the council should be aware of. One of them is a rewrite of the PUD ordinance. Uh we looked at how other municipalities and metro have handled PUD ordinances as well as, you know, what are some model ordinances around the country. And we've put together a, I think, a logical next step in what PUD ordinances should look like in Horace. They're very popular right now with developers in Horace, with uh many developers who I interact with view their development as being more successful than a planning and development. So having an ordinance that actually, that allows for planning developments to function as their intent is, uh which is something that doesn't fit into the current zoning code, but has a marginal social benefit. The PUD ordinance needs to be lock tight because it, by debating from the code, there are other now certain other obligations they have to the public. Uh the other one is a rewrite of the R five ordinance, one that aligns with the future land use map densities and one that integrates well into R six. Though, public hearing for those should be in the next couple of weeks or so. And then the last thing is, I'm the opening speaker at the North Dakota Planning Association Conference on building planning departments, the theme is beginning new journeys. And this is the second time I've gotten to be the first community development director somewhere, so. Maybe, maybe it'll be a good speech, I don't know. I should probably, I should probably write the PowerPoint before I told him I do it, but.
Well, we will have the opportunity to put the pressure on him because this is coordinated with the League of Cities Conference. So we can be, we'd be easy for us to be intense to make sure he has a strong presentation.
So what you're saying is that we can be there and heckle if necessary?
Yeah.
Is that what you, okay. Not saying that.
What would be, what would be different?
Read between the lines here.
Yeah, yeah, just saying. Um, all right. Anything else, Matt?
All that's that I got.
Cool. All right, that sounds like, that sounds like fun, I'll put that together.
That's great.
Uh okay, Brent, what do you got?
Uh first one, I did have a request from uh Lindsey, our deputy from Cass County Sheriff's Department, uh today, night unite, night to unite in Horace, it will be August thirteenth at Horace Lutheran Church, just like last year. Uh they asked that if we'd be willing to do any contributions. Last year, we did uh four bikes, so we do two boy, two boy bikes, two girl bikes, one for, one of each gender for younger and then one for older, more like seventy, eight year old, uh with bike helmet. So, because we all encourage kids to be out there safely riding bikes with helmets. Uh that last year was around four hundred dollars, so looking for councils, okay, to do that. They're trying to get.
Be in motion or?
I, I think it'd be, we could do it either way, but it'd probably just be easiest to show your support and if you're comfortable with that, so.
Well, it's good use of funds to contribute, so.
If you want to make a motion, you'll just.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure, should we say after four hundred or?
I would just say for four bikes and four helmets. To give you a general cost, this move is around four hundred dollars. Um but that way we just.
Yeah, could use funds.
Okay, so Brian made a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Okay.
Yep.
Um the other item I had is mosquito spraying. Uh mosquitoes over the next couple of weeks will be likely high.
Likely?
Due to.
Will be.
I, I, I will say this, as we were not the highest readings for mosquito numbers. Uh there were a couple of other locations in the metro, I think it was Fargo, there was Country Club that had a reading of five hundred ninety-one mosquitoes in the count, or trap, which is really high. Uh typically when we're out spraying, mosquito numbers are above sixty. Uh our highest trap was a hundred ninety-one, I believe, or, or, or a hundred nineties. Leonard had one around three hundred ninety. Castleton had a higher one too. So we did have a high read, but it wasn't high, so I'll give you that assurance.
That didn't help much.
Well, it's still one of the worst years.
Yeah, this is one of the worst years for mosquitoes, like Chelsea said. Uh over the next couple of weeks, numbers will be high due to the sequence of when we had rains, substantial rains. Uh last week when we had some heavy rains, that basically took what the county's work, what vector control's work was for those days leading up to those rain, or before those rains, really made it ineffective because it diluted out the chemicals and everything. But I know vector controls being as aggressive as they can. Uh tomorrow night you'll, tomorrow night Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, there was article in the forum talking about they would be truck, doing truck mound spraying. We intend on being, or doing that too, weather dependent. We do have to meet different conditions of the weather, it can't be too hot where it just evaporates the chemical being sprayed. It can't be too windy, otherwise the chemicals dilute, diluted out. Uh so we have to find that sweet spot and we have to do it during certain periods of the day because you're trying to get when the mosquitoes are out flying or.
The intention is to try and do that spraying.
We, we intend on spraying tomorrow night and then we'll come back again later in the week as our plan, weather dependent, to spray again. So we are trying to be aggressive with the spraying. Uh as I mentioned before, some folks would ask, how come we're not doing aerial spraying? Aerial spraying is very expensive. The cost effectiveness, you're looking at for say a horse, we're talking probably seventy-eight grand, seven to eight thousand dollars to do one aerial spray. Or truck based spraying, which is fairly effective. We may have to do it for two nights in the same week, but that's, that costs us around three hundred fifty dollars. So the cost is a big difference and that's why we, why we haven't done aerial spraying. If we did aerial spraying, if the community wanted to get into that, then we would have to look at increasing the vector uh dollar amount significantly.
More frequent truck sprays?
Well, we do based on the trap council, we'll go spray, we'll see what the trap cons are and then we do another spraying. Uh we also take the guidance from Cass County Vector Control. So if they're saying that they're out spraying or recommend that we do that, then we go out spraying. So we do, we've tried to piggyback off of what their guidance is because they're in mosquito experts.
And they're tracking the track laws.
And they, yes, they're doing that for us.
So they're able to see the results in the traps from the road spraying?
Typically when we do road, uh truck mound spraying, uh we do see a significant drop with our mosquito count numbers. Most of our problem areas are along the river and that's where our development is. So we're able to be out there and we try to get, be effective. Pre- previous times we sprayed this year, we've seen significant drops in our numbers after we've done spray applications. And sometimes like in fourth July, we were fairly aggressive right before the fourth, just to help knock it down because we were, that was the last time we were getting feedback from the county saying that those mosquito numbers are going to be very high. So we were trying to be out there spraying right as the hatch was occurring or right after the hatch occurred. So typically when we have a significant rainfall or rainfall event, um you're looking at seven days for that next hatch.
So all the ones that we do miss spraying, find me, so.
Yep, yep, we put a detour out to Corey's.
I should just spray like here and get all the rest of them.
Yep.
I did um talk to, or I saw on one of my Facebook groups, this couple that moved into Arrowhead, I think, and they, their business is to um do mosquito treatments in people's yards. So if somebody really hates them and really is concerned, I mean, there is people that will help you with that too.
Yep.
Okay. What else you got, Brent?
That's all I had, uh while I do have one, we introduce a agenda and again, we had meeting minutes. Brian is looking at uh the SharePoint where you're looking at was a meeting summary. So if you go on to the, there's a Word document saying meeting minutes, that is the actual meeting minutes. So you were looking at a summary which I posted earlier for just to show you the motions, actions, that's what's published on paper. Yep, so that Word file, yes, that is the complete meeting minutes, so. I didn't, apologize, I didn't recognize that you weren't on that one right off the bat, so. Those are the meeting minutes, so you could take action on those items.
Just out of curiosity, how did that block party go at, did anybody hear anything about that block party?
Chelsea, would you, the block party off three?
I was out of town.
You're out of town, definitely, I have not heard anything, but.
I'm assuming we, we didn't hear anything, it all went well.
The block party in Moss River returned to Combs, that was good.
There you go.
Must not have got too wild, then again.
They came back and complete.
Come back stuck to anyone's head or anything.
City wants to review this, go back to.
Basically you could, you could take action on the minutes because they are.
Yep.
They're available, yes, they are available to you. I asked the table because I saw you had the summary and I didn't realize that you had that until after we passed.
That's a very good throw.
Yep. Yep, looks like it's accurate.
Yeah, it's got all the stuff we talked about, so. All right, so with that.
Make a motion, you want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yep, if Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's passed. All right, on the portfolio reports, um diversion update, we've been in contact with the diversion and the city of Fargo, was last week, right? I can't remember.
Week before last.
Week before last, yeah, and uh so.
It was, it was last Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, last Monday.
So there's some things in play with that, we'll see, I think we need to do probably a contact. I can get ahold of Tim and just kind of see where things are at. Um we're trying to shoot here, get some stuff done here by first, before our first meeting in uh August, so.
We're hoping to get some feedback.
Yeah.
This week or next week?
Yeah, yeah, I'm hoping this week we actually get some feedback on where we're at, but we'll continue to have those conversations.
We were going to be sending a letter requesting services for utilities. And then trying to get another meeting set up with them to.
Just follow up with everything.
Okay, that's great. Stay on.
Okay.
So you have anything to say to us?
Yeah. So anyway, we'll keep that conversation going. Um the economic group, uh Matt, excellent getting that together. Um I, just, just to follow up on what he said, I think we've got the foundation to get things moving now. It was a good evening of, of talk, um they put together, the AE two S put together a really good brochure. It gives us some points, discussion points, uh some different ideas to market the city. And I think the follow up is going to be coming with that, we'll, when we have our next meeting, we'll, we'll start doing some discussion and planning a little bit more about maybe what we want to do for like a first year. What do we want to try and accomplish as an economic development group board in one year? Maybe we go to three, but anyway, it's a good discussion, I'm glad we got it off the ground. I'm excited to see where this goes.
Just to tag on to that, can, is there anything that that economic development group needs? I mean, we should get something posted on the website or something to, for awareness, that this.
Not yet, well, they don't even have a, so the group's going to have to have some type of an established draft charter.
Okay, so they're working on that.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm treating this very much like a, like a neighborhood planning group right now. And that really, in my experience, we do a draft charter and that kind of guides them. Maybe then, but right now, no, I'm not sure, right now it's still too early.
Okay.
Yep, and I, but I think again, we're, we're in the right direction here.
Want the residents and everyone to know that this is starting to happen, right?
Right.
Because we're moving in that direction, that we've now got a group that's focused on economic development in the city, which is huge, that's a big, it's a big step.
So the other thing I have on my list here that I just remembered, should we invite John Shockley to come down here and go through that explanation sometime, I mean, just, I want to give him enough heads up on this, that's what I'm thinking, I'll mention it now before I forget again.
Yeah. Just to kind of go through. Lucas and I coordinate with Gay and John to come down, talk, do his special assessment spiel that he's done. You guys have done with uh like Fargo and West Fargo.
I just think it'd be a good idea to have him explain it because it sounds like he's done a very good job at the other locations where he's done that. Probably wouldn't hurt for him to come down here and kind of explain, you know, you've done a jo- done it too. Let's have John go through and give his spiel of.
Uh regular meeting or a special meeting or what are you thinking?
Well, I was just thinking at a regular meeting, we just block time for him to do that, I don't know how much time he needs for that. My thought was to have him do it like at the beginning of the meeting and just kind of let him go with it and we'll just, we'll just pick it up after. But let him, let him have that discussion because I think it'd be valuable for the folks in town here to kind of know how this all plays out.
You're talking to like the task force, right?
Yeah. Yep. Though twenty, I mean, that, but that's fine, it, it was a good presentation from what I understand, I wasn't there, but just in talking to people who were, it explained things.
Yeah, talks, he talks all the time.
You know?
I went along with him.
Yeah, so, so folks know, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do is get some information out so people understand how this works and it doesn't, it doesn't just get sprung out of thin air, there's a process that goes through.
Is that something we would want to like get out there to people that that's going to be happening or?
I, we can, I mean, I, we'll just find out when he can do it and then we can maybe put some promo, but certainly for our Facebook live so people could watch it at thirty years as well, so they know. That is all I've got, okay. John's not here, Dave's not here, Chelsea?
Well, I don't have anything, I guess I was up the economic development and then I am also pretty excited to see what.
Well, I don't have anything. I guess I was at the economic development and then I am also pretty excited to see what can come out of that group and I'm working on being there. That's about it right now.
Okay. All right. What do you got?
Only question I had was, um, replacement position for community development first director or community.
Communicator. Not yet. Not yet. Yes.
They want me to speak in this mark. I ain't going nowhere. So, no, I'm at the communications.
Yeah, commi- the communications person, uh, uh, that position individual resigned. And we're looking for a new communications person. I have four resumes to review. And so we're working with Preference Employment Solutions, who we worked with before to, uh, help with that. And except they have four resumes to review that they've, because they do the initial application period, the screening. And then the strong candidates that they have, they pass on to us. So I'm reviewing that. And hoping we can get some interviews scheduled in the next week or two.
Okay. So we should.
We are trying to fill it.
Have somebody as likely within the next two weeks.
Yep. We're trying to get something filled as soon as we can.
No, good. Anything else, Brian?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Then I think we are good for the evening.
Motion adjourned.
Brian, does a motion?
Second.
Chelsea is a second. I concur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Your adjourned.